I'd like to call this meeting of the Clay County Commission to Order. We will begin with our invocation. Mark Willis will be leading us. And I think you know the drill, so please proceed.
Thank you. My name is Mark Willis. I'm the pastor at North Oak Christian Church here in the Northland. As I've mentioned many times when I come, getting ready to celebrate our 50th anniversary. And we're very, very happy to be here in the Northland serving. Would you please join me in a moment of prayer? "Gracious God, as we come before you today to discuss important matters, we ask for your guidance and wisdom. You are the source of all knowledge and understanding. Therefore, we seek your direction in our decision-making. In your word, you tell us to trust in you with all our heart and not lean on our own understanding. Help us to listen attentively to one another with open hearts and minds. May we not be quick to judge or criticize, but instead seek to understand different perspectives and opinions. We pray that you will give us the discernment to make the best decisions for the greater good. We trust that you will guide us on this path and lead us to reach a consensus that reflects your will. May our words and actions be guided by your love and grace. In your name we do pray. Amen."
Thank you. Please join me in the pledge.
Congratulations to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Nolte, Commissioner Withington, Commissioner Lawson, Commissioner Wagner, Commissioner Johnson, Commissioner Thompson, Commissioner Carpenter.
With that, we will move to the approval of this evening's agenda. Commissioner Johnson.
Move to approve tonight's agenda.
Motion has been made for the approval of this evening's agenda. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, you are recognized to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Johnson, Commissioner Lawson, Commissioner Wagner, Commissioner Carpenter.
Yes.
Commissioner Withington.
Yes.
Motion passes, five zero.
Next on our agenda are public comments. Are there any citizens wishing to come forward and make comments to the commission? Seeing none. That brings us to our consent agenda. Administrator?
The consent agenda allows the commission to act upon items considered to be routine and approved in one motion. These may include items that have been reviewed by the commission in a prior session. There will be no separate discussion unless a commissioner requests that an item be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. There are 14 items on this afternoon's consent agenda. The first is approval of the February 27th commission meeting minutes. Resolution 2025-110 is approving invoice payments for Clay County from the period of March 29th to April 4th. There are 241 invoices totaling $1,296,911.28. Resolution 2025-112 is approving the 2025-26 grant application with the Missouri Department of Transportation Highway Safety and Traffic Division for the hazardous moving violation grant. Resolution 2025-113 approving the 2025-26 grant application with the Missouri Department of Transportation Highway Safety and Traffic Division for dedicated impaired driving enforcement. Resolution 2025-114 approving the 2025-26 grant application with the Missouri Department of Transportation Highway Safety and Traffic Division for distracted driving enforcement. Resolution 2025-115 approving the 2025-26 grant application with the Missouri Department of Transportation Highway Safety and Traffic Division for DWI blood testing reimbursement. Resolution 2025-116 approving the 2025-26 grant application with the Missouri Department of Transportation Highway Safety and Traffic Division for hazardous moving violation overtime enforcement. Resolution 2025-117 approving the 2025-26 grant application for the Missouri Department of Transportation Highway Safety and Traffic Division impaired driving overtime enforcement. Resolution 2025-118 approving the 2025-26 grant application with the Missouri Department of Transportation Highway Safety and Traffic Division for youth alcohol enforcement. 2025 Ordinance 09, reappropriate and revise the adopted budget for the current year in the amount of $2,427,700 to provide cash flow for the reimbursement portion of three new airport grants. Resolution 2025-120 approving the disposal of information technology electronic equipment as stipulated per Article 7 of Chapter 37 surplus auction of the county code of ordinances. Resolution 2025-122 approving a term and supply agreement with alterations in custom sewing and Galls LLC for uniform and body armor. Resolution 2025-119 approving the cooperative purchase service agreement with Sidaptic for security upgrades and services needed at the adult and juvenile detention centers. And Resolution 2025-121 appointing members to the Children's Services Fund Board.
Is there a motion related to this issue? Commissioner Johnson.
Move to approve tonight's consent agenda.
Motion has been made for the approval of this evening's consent agenda. Discussion? Seeing none, you are recognized to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Commissioner Lawson.
Yeah.
Commissioner Wagner.
Aye.
Commissioner Carpenter.
Yes.
Commissioner Withington.
Yes.
Motion passes, five zero.
That brings us to our regular agenda. First item on this evening's regular agenda is 2025-111. Administrator?
Resolution 2025-111 is approving invoice payments for the Clay County Prosecutor's Office from March 29th through April 4th. There are 10 invoices totaling $5,052.04.
Commissioner Johnson.
Move to approve 2025-111.
Motion has been made for the approval of 2025-111. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, you are recognized to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Commissioner Lawson.
Yeah.
Commissioner Wagner.
Aye.
Commissioner Carpenter.
Yes.
Commissioner Withington. Motion passes, four zero.
Next item on this evening's regular agenda is 2025-124. Administrator? Commissioner Lawson, I'm sorry, did you seek recognition?
No.
Oh, I'm sorry. My mistake. Administrator, please proceed.
Thank you, Commissioners. If I may, I'd like to introduce the next three items on the agenda because these are companion resolutions, and we will be talking about all three of them at the same time. So the first is Resolution 2025-124, which is approving the Clay County Classification and Compensation Plan. Resolution 2025-125, which is approving updates to the Clay County Human Resources Manual. And Resolutions 2025-126 is approving the Compensation Plan Budgeting Policy. And so as the commission is aware, several meetings ago, our consultant was present and provided information, a detailed report on the compensation and classification report that had been done. And we're back before you this evening for your consideration of adopting the classification and pay plan along with these companion resolutions. And with that, I'd like to introduce Director Kim Callahan, who will talk about several of these, and I will then talk about the budget policy recommendation.
Okay. Good evening, Kim Callahan, the HR Director.
Please proceed.
All right. Well, as Diana said, on February the 27th, Melania Halvers-Maz was here from McGrath and went over and presented the findings of the comp study. So at that time, the commission requested that we go to the department heads and the office holders and talk to them and make sure that they were fine with the plan. So we did reach out to everyone and talked to each department head and office holder. I do have to thank Sheriff Aitken and Undersheriff Self. They spent three hours with us two weeks ago going over the plan, and so I appreciate all that time. And it was a good meeting. Also, so we did receive positive feedback after this from all the department heads and the office holders. So we believe this study will provide a clear roadmap for implementing the new comp and class plan. So let's get started. Okay. As Diana said, these are the resolutions that we're asking you to approve this evening, and I'm going to go through each one. Okay. First of all, we'd like to go over the classification structure, okay? So the first thing that was done was a position questionnaire by each employee. There were over 200. So if there's five technicians, only one of them did the position questionnaire. And they would do that as a group when possible. The categories included educations, license certificates. They looked at their job complexity, the internal and external contact. They looked at the equipment, machinery, tools that they used. They looked at the supervision. Did it include leadership? They looked at financial, and they also looked at the work environment and physical requirements of their positions. So these were analyzed by these various categories. Okay. Then the position placement on the salary schedule. What did they look at for that? They looked at the external market. They looked at internal compatibility, position analysis, and compression. Okay. We wanted a competitive pay structure, and this is what they looked at to get to this point. Okay. So the compensation structure that we have, we have two different structures. One is the general salary structure, which is grades one through 300. And the second is the 24/7 salary schedule, which is grades 200. So this is the sheet that you have, okay? Hand it out to you. So this is the general pay schedule on one side. That's the 100 to 300s. And on the other side is the 24/7, which is the 200 pay grade. Okay? So I'm going to give you some examples next, so we'll go through and I'll show you where to look at on this. Okay? And the other thing they were given was the classification structure, which shows the job titles. Okay. So, let's see here. I guess I'll move on. Just to be specific, on the general salary schedule, there are 23 pay grades, okay? And there's a 6% to 10% separation per pay grade. And there are 20 steps with 2% each step, okay? So 50% of the market is at 10. And that's where the sweet spot for us to have our people is at 10. Okay? That's our target. So on the 24/7, there are 11 pay grades, okay? And there's a 10% to 15% separation per grade. And there's 14 steps that have 3% increases. And the marketplace for this is nine, okay? So then what do we do? So the general, the implementation, okay? We put the existing salary on the closest step, and then we add either one to four steps, depending on, let's see, one to four, they would get an additional two steps, okay? If they're already five to nine, they get one additional step. So we're going to look at their salary. Where are you at? What step are you on? And then if they're low, you know, they're low from the market, one to four, we're going to give them an additional two steps. If they're already five to nine, they get one. If they're nine or above, they're already in market, they won't get an additional step. Okay? So for 24/7, they are placed, it's one to four also, except it's not as many steps, okay? And one to four, for the people that are, they get two additional steps if it's one to four. And then five to eight, they get an additional one step. And then I've got some examples, and it'll make more sense to you. Okay. So let's look first at the 24/7 salary schedule, okay? We have a deputy sheriff that's currently making $57,764.18. He is in pay grade 220. So if you look on that 24/7 salary schedule, and you look at pay grade 220, say, you look over, and his salary falls within step two. It's always above, it's not below. No one loses money on this, okay? So that means he's at step two. His new salary would be 58,531.20. But he's going to get an additional two steps. So that will get him up to step four.
Thank you.
And that would make his final salary $62,088, which gives him an increase of 7.49. Okay. Does that make sense? Do you see that here on? Yes. Mr. Commissioner Johnson, yes?
Commissioner Johnson has a question. Commissioner?
Yes, thank you. So this is actually what I wanted to see, was talking through how this actually works. So that would bring that person up to step, let's see, I lost my chair in place here. He's currently at step, what step is he currently at?
Okay, he's at step two. If you look at his salary, and you look on 220, where does his salary fall? It falls within step two.
Which is at 58,000 right now.
Yes. That's the closest step without him losing money.
And once we implement this, we automatically will bump him up to step?
Four.
Four.
He gets an additional two step because he's within the one to four.
Yeah. So that's an automatic, roughly $4,000 a year pay raise.
Yes.
With the ultimate goal is to get him to step in this one, step nine, is it step nine that's the 50%?
Yes.
To step nine, which would be the 50%. But if we ultimately want to get to the 55 to 60%,
Right.
That would put him up to, what, 11, which would be about $76,000.
Yeah.
Which we'll ultimately, we would love to get to.
That's our goal. That's our goal. But this year, this is what we're going to be able to do.
But right now, that guy's going to go from 50...
Seven.
Seven up to 62
Yes.
When we get this implemented.
Right. And mind you, this 57 was the 5% they got in January, the COLA. All right? So that's where he's at right now. So, and this isn't a raise, it's an implementation
Right.
To get them on the plan.
Right.
To get working towards the market.
Yep.
Yeah.
By the way, I don't know if you'd mentioned, but you just raised, I think, a very good point, and that is, we're not talking about raises, we are talking about implementation of the new plan.
Yes.
Which is really the issue here, so
Absolutely.
To avoid some confusion, thank you for making that clear.
Yeah, yeah. And the second, we have a detention officer. His current salary, his or her, is 50, oh, I'm sorry. Should we want to stop?
I will recognize her in a few moments.
Okay, you want to go ahead? Okay. Detention officer making $50,008. That is pay grade 205. So you look at 205, and you find the 50,000. That is at step seven. That's the closest step. So that takes this person to $50,960. So they're at step seven right now. So they do get an additional step up to step eight, which will take them to $52,499.20, which is a 5% increase for this detention officer. And then I have one more in the 24/7, a sergeant two. That's at $91,757.49. That's pay grade 230. So if you look at that, that puts this person at step 11, okay? So step 11 is $92,414.40. Okay? So they're not going to get an additional step. They're already within the market or above, but they are getting a small increase, 0.72. Okay.
I think she was first. Okay, so just to make this clear, I'm guessing there's a lot of people watching this at home right now. So some people are going to jump more steps than others because they're further away from that 50 percentile we want to get to.
Exactly.
So that's why the first scenario, he's jumping, I don't know, four steps or whatever it was.
Yes.
The second scenario, he's jumping two or one step. And then the last one, he's already over that 50%, so he's not jumping. But what, how does he get from step 11 to step 12?
Well, next year, when we have the merit increases, or depending on what the CIP is, if we move, if we do a 2%, it's going to move this 2%.
Well, and let me clarify that. So we'll talk about that on the budgeting aspect of this. So there are different buckets when we go through the budget process. And so the first one would be is, again, maintaining the integrity of the structure. So the first thing in the budget process is, we'd look at, well, what is the CPI been for the last 12 months, which is what we've historically done. And so let's say that the CPI is 2%. We also know that the commission's target, you want to be at the market. Your target is to maintain 50, but you really want to be 55 or 60. And so if financially we can afford that, then the budget may say, we're going to do a salary plan adjustment of 3%. CPI is two, we'll do 3%. Now, what that means is every step goes up 3%. So every employee would get that 3% benefit in January, similar to what we've done in the past, right? Because now we've adjusted the pay plan structure as a whole to try and keep up with the market. So that's one pot of money. Your question was, how does the sergeant go from a step 11 to a step 12?
But just real core for clarify, so in your scenario, step 11 will still be step 11, but step 11 will now be higher.
Right.
Because we've adjusted it all to the market.
Right. Every step has gone up 3%. So everybody would get that no matter what, right?
So he'll still be in step 11, but will be getting paid more because of our cost of living adjustment or whatever.
Right. Because the salary schedule has now been adjusted. So everybody gets that on the same step.
Yeah.
But I'm getting that increase.
And then to get him to step 12?
To get to step 12, then the second part during the budget process is to fund step increases. And what we've suggested is those step increases would be eligible in June, right? So you get the salary adjustment happens in January, like it does now, and everybody, the whole plan goes up. But in June, step increases would be eligible based on a performance, acceptable performance that is determined by your department. And if you meet that, then, and we have the funding, then we fund a step increase. And so that's when I would go from step 11, if I were that officer
Yeah.
To step 12 in June.
Okay.
And then we'll talk about the third pot of money also, which has to do with three classes. But yeah.
That makes sense. Thank you. Commissioner Lawson?
Okay, so I'll make sure of something. You talk about performance. So everybody in this county gets a yearly appraisal, correct? Okay, so say Susie has done an exemplary job. She's outstanding. And she's an 11, you know, I did this for, she's an office specialist. And she can be, say she's good enough, can she be moved to 12, or could she go up another step? You know, is that a possibility? And if she's that good, will we automatically give her a raise? Or is it, well, we got to check and see if we got enough money, you know?
Well, yes. I mean, it all boils down to whether the county can afford, number one, to adjust the pay structure, right? Meaning all the steps go up that everybody automatically gets. And then the second would be, the second pot of money financially is, can the county afford to fund one step increase, is what will be budgeted for every employee? Now, what we've said to department heads and office holders is, you know, if you have some employees that don't meet that, and so you may have some additional funds, but that person doesn't get their step increase, but you've got an exemplary employee and you would like to move them up another step, two steps, then with the justification, right, and submittal, and if there's funding, then that could occur. But each department will set what is the criteria for their department that meets, you know, the standard for meeting expectations for job performance to get a step increase.
But it's not just a carte blanche, straight across the board. It's if a department, one person gets a raise, doesn't mean everybody gets a raise. It means that these select individuals will get maybe one step, maybe two steps, or maybe nothing.
Right. But that's the step part of it. But But when it comes to, how do I move up the grades and get higher steps? That is gonna be based on performance.
Okay, good.
Yes. And that would happen in June.
By the supervisor would be the determining factor.
Correct. The department handles that.
Okay, great.
Commissioner Wagner?
Thank you, and I apologize for stepping out for a moment, so this question may have been answered by what you were telling Commissioner Johnson, but I just wanted to swing back around to compression, just for a moment. And administrators, you were talking about, you know, if we've got the money for step increases, you're doing them all. And so, my interpretation of that is, that is how you deal with potential compression issues. You're doing them all, or you're not doing them at all. Is that, is that a fair statement to say, or do you wanna go into a little more detail on compression?
No, that would be correct in the budget cycle, so, you know, it all's gonna depend on the financial aspect of it, right? And so, when we talk about the budgeting policy, that's where saying, we're recommending prioritizing. So, we're prioritizing, our recommendation is, the first thing is, keep this pay structure current with the market, and your goal of being at least 50% of the market, but gosh, we really wanna move that market number, that step 9 or step 10,
Yeah.
Even higher than at 50%. You wanna be 55 or 60%. So, that's the first thing. The second thing is coming in, and budgeting every employee that would be eligible. Now, if you're on introductory status, you're not eligible, right? But if you're not on introductory status, we're going to budget that everybody would get a step increase in June. But that is really gonna be up to the departments of doing those evaluations, and meeting with their employees, and giving a step or not giving a step.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Commissioner Johnson, you have a follow-up?
So, we set aside, I think it was a million dollars, which is a smart move, to help, to handle this. Where are we with that?
Yeah.
If you wanna comment on that now, or am I jumping ahead?
I would be happy to. First of all, you're absolutely correct, and we appreciate the commission setting aside $1 million to implement this, to implement what we're talking about, to make these...
Well, fair enough, so make sure that everybody's clear, you were smart enough to tell us to do that. So, I appreciate that.
And so, to implement the plan, as Director Callahan has talked about, you know, 2 additional steps, 1 additional step, because again, our goal is, and a little bit to Commissioner Wagner's point about dealing with compression, we wanna get our existing employees further into the step plan, and closer to that, to that market, to that midpoint, either step 9 or 10. So, as we bring new hires in, you know, we don't have that compression issue. To do this plan is actually $4 million. So, how we are funding that is, the million that the commissions let us set aside, but we also have additional funding in the personnel budget, the way that we budget in the past, that we're able to use those funds in combination with this, to make this implemented.
So, to implement it as you're presenting, that does not, that $4 million does not get everybody up to the 50 percentile yet?
No, that doesn't. That is just doing what this is, to, yes. To get people into the structure, but trying to get those that are in the lower grade, the lower steps, a little further along. Which is why, and I certainly appreciate, our employees that are at the midpoint or higher, which are at the market, we would love to give them additional increases also, and additional steps, but we really could not afford that, but we really, the goal is to get everybody as close to the market as we can, or beyond.
Yeah. Perfect, thanks.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes, just a follow-up, and again, this may be coming up later, I know you all have more to go, so if I'm jumping ahead, I apologize. But, in, do we have like projections looking forward in terms, because when I, when I look at these numbers, like, on the other side, the general salary schedule, like for pay grade 180 on up, especially, you know, you start seeing some fairly significant numbers, and so I'm, one of the things I'm curious about is just if we have a sense of what we're talking about in a few years, if we were to keep moving in that direction?
We have not looked at it from a forecasting standpoint, because again, that will be part of the budget cycle, as we do now, right? When we put the budget together, you know, and I come to you with a recommendation, I will tell you, CPI is X, right? And so, as the budget team, we'll look at that and say, well, we wanna do more than the CPI, what is that going to cost us? And so, we factor that in. So, that will still happen, in that same process, and so what that dollar value is. And so, my recommendation in the strategy for budgeting, that is the number 1 priority. And then we come in and we budget for the step increases, and so, but we've not really looked at that. You know, historically, it's gonna be probably, you know, the percentage increase is gonna, you know, continues to grow every year as we move salaries up, so...
Yes. So, like with these, with these steps though, on some of the higher number pay grades, are the employees going to, who fall into those categories, are they going to default expect that that's where they will be either now or in the future, or, because I just don't wanna, you know, send any kind of false signals to folks, in terms of what we can or cannot actually afford to do. And so, I'm just trying to get clarity on what we can actually afford to do, in terms of these, some of these bigger numbers on the pay scale especially.
Right. Well, that's exactly right. And that is one of the challenges with a pay structure like this, is because employees will sit there, and even though we make adjustments, and maybe fiscally, the county can only fund adjusting the salary, which me, the salary schedule, which means, I stay on step 11, I get an increase, I get a 3% or 5%, and so my step goes up, but I'm not going to step 12, because the county can't afford to fund, but you remember, the step increases are a 2% or a 3%, depending on which grade. We may not be able to do that every year and do both. And so, you have to manage those expectations very clearly, because what happens is, employees will see, well, I'm stuck at step 12, am I ever gonna get to step 20, right? And we say it all the time, is it depends on the fiscal health of the county and what's going on. So, yet again, it's making sure that we have good communication about that.
Thank you, yeah, no, that's very helpful. I just, I guess I think that will probably be important going forward on an ongoing basis, especially should we run into some kind of economic downturn at some point, sales taxes go down, revenue goes down, you know, we may struggle to meet where we're currently at already, and so I don't wanna, I don't know, to create a false, any false promises, I guess.
Well, and that's why, if you look in the budget policy, which is the third item that we're discussing, there are disclaimers, and they're all over the place, that it depends on if the county can fund it. And I hate to say it, you know, back in 2008, when, you know, the property values declined, and, you know, revenues were very tight for public entities, in that particular case, there might not be any salary schedule adjustment or any step increases. Or maybe you fund a step increase, because it's 2%, but you don't do anything to the salary schedule. So, there are options for the county to consider, as you go through the budget cycle, and it's one of those, when the budget is presented, those communications, it's very important that employees understand, you know, what's going to happen in the next year. Luckily, we present the budget to you all in November, so that gives some lead time for employees about what they can expect in the next fiscal year for their own personal budgets.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Thanks.
Commissioner Withington?
So, there's an appeal process, right? If somebody doesn't agree, how exactly is that gonna work?
Okay, that's on a couple of pages down, if you wanna wait, okay.
Then we can come back, we can come back to that.
Okay.
So, we'll come back to the point that you were raising, that's good. Okay, so Commissioner Wagner, I think you were next.
Thank you. Commissioner Carpenter's comments made me start thinking about one of my favorite topics when it comes to budget. And that is related to vacancies. And, what happens if we move to the midpoint? And, you know, and I'll say this, this won't be your problem, it's gonna be someone else's problem, ma'am administrator, so, you can, and you can even say that if you want to, I don't really care. But I guess, the observation that I will make for staff, and anyone who particularly cares, is, should we get salaries where they need to be, and I think we found this out in the sheriff's office with some of his folks, when you finally start hitting the market, all of a sudden, people get more interested in your positions, and they start getting filled, and as I have probably painfully pointed out the last couple of budgets, that should we actually fill all the positions that we currently have, we begin to project out something that's kind of upside down. And so, I take to heart your comment that you've made a couple of times, related to, if it's not in the budget, you don't, you don't pay for extra steps. My caution is just simply to note that we could fill all of our positions, and then we won't have money for additional steps. Is that a fair statement, administrator short timer?
Well, I would say to you that I would be very surprised if there would ever be a fiscal year, that there is never a vacant position in 12 months for every position in the county.
I tend to agree, yeah.
There are always going to be vacancies and turnover.
Yeah.
No matter whether we're at the market, or 60% of the market.
Yeah.
That just happens, right? So, there will always be that component of it. We have, in this structure, when we talk about sort of the budgeting a little bit, we are trying to tighten that up a little bit, about funding, and how that happens when it comes to reclassifications, and some other changes that might occur, to kind of manage that a little bit differently.
Yeah.
You know, to kind of have a better budgeting perspective on that. But, yeah, I don't expect us to not have vacancy savings.
No, no, we will have our share of turnover and everything else, but as we have made a commitment to be an employer of choice, and now we are talking about putting compensation more in line with the market, I must make a cautionary statement, that we need, really need to look at how we do those sorts of things for the future.
Yes, so, I would say, shop Clay County, shop often, and shop a lot.
Very well said, very well said. Thank you very much.
I believe that concludes the immediate questions from the commission, so please proceed.
Okay. So, okay, but the bottom of this is the general salary schedule. I'll just go over these real quick. Say, we have a child support caseworker that is making $43,848.73. That is pay grade 120, which puts her, this person, at step 2, okay? And, this would make them eligible for 2 more steps, which would make their final salary $46,280, which is an increase of 5.54%. Okay? So, we have several IT technicians, we have one that's making $52,743.60, that's pay grade 130. So, you look, and that puts them at step 5, okay? Which makes them eligible for 1 additional step, which would make their final salary $54,080, which is a 2.53% increase. So then, we have an office specialist, that is pay grade 120, and making $53,041.72. That's, puts them at initial step 11. So, they are above market right now. So, they won't get an additional step, but to put them to the closest step, they still get an increase. So, they go from $53,41 to $53,144, which is a 0.19% increase. So, any questions on how to look at this, or, okay? So then, we get to the implementation phase. So, if this is approved, the first thing that we're gonna do is post the salary schedules and the classification structure on ADP, for all the employees to see. I mean, it's posted right now, but a lot of people can't read it, so we're gonna make it to where everyone can see it. So, then what we're gonna do, is we're gonna do an individual employee notification. It's gonna be a letter to each employee, showing, this is where you're at, and this is the step that you're gonna go to, this is your title, some titles are changing, some aren't. That's gonna be included in there. And darn, because Mr. With, it says, this is his time, I'm gonna talk about the appeal. Well, I'll wait, I'll wait till he comes back. So, and they'll also, we'll tell them about the appeal process, and I'll wait till he comes back to talk about that more.
Could I?
Yes, sir.
I'm gonna recognize Commissioner Lawson, I think she wanted to...
Yes. You were talking about individual employee notification.
Yes, ma'am.
New title, pay grade, step. You know, looking at this, I think it's a great deal. Don't get me wrong, I'm not upset about any of that. But one of the things that bothered me, and probably the majority of the calls I got, why did we not take this paper, give it to every supervisor, and they sit down with every single employee they have, go over this completely in advance, before you brought it to us? And, I get why in some ways, but, the bottom line is, you can, if there's something out there that you don't know about, you can come up with all kinds of crap that, oh my God, what if, and what if, and what if, and I'm not getting this, and I think I deserve that. If the people know in advance, they may not be thrilled with everything, but at least, they would say, well, okay, I see where it's going in the future, and I can accept it all.
Okay.
But I just think that it was extremely poor planning not to, and not knocking anybody, but just saying, I think that sometimes we talk about transparency up here, till we're sick in the face of hearing it, and yet, within our own circle, no transparency.
Okay.
So, I just think that that should have been something that we did well in advance, before proceeding.
And I do appreciate that, I do. But I'm gonna call up Melania from McGrath, to let her explain the process, okay? And also, the appeal process. You can tell them a little bit about that. Yep, yep, yep.
Good evening, Melania Halverson-Maze with McGrath Human Resources Group. So, we have a, the process that we utilize when we do the review, is, it's relatively structured, and the reason why we do it in that, in that very structured, and what I would say, very contained format, is because it is still draft. It is my work product, where I have analyzed the market, the position questionnaires, we've taken a look at that internal alignment, we've also taken a look at those compression factors. And, part of this has been conversations with the department, and now, I am sitting down with every department director individually to say, this is what I think I'm seeing, okay? And give me your, give me your honest feedback. And, there were ground rules for that meeting, and it was, everything that we talk about has to stay here for right now, because it's subject still to some tweaking, and that tweaking may be based upon that information, additional information that those departments share. But, I have to also take a step back and say, alright, what I'm trying to do here for the county is to develop a system for you, and that system, I have to look at across all of the departments. And so, whereas I appreciate where you're coming from, of having all of the employees provide their input into this, that isn't a very typical process that is utilized, simply because it becomes very, it's very personal for the employees, and we understand that. And that's why I was completely open to having the appeal process. And, so if there is an employee that disagrees, number 1, with their pay grade, or they disagree with their job title, they'll have a mechanism that, that will be, and probably Kim's gonna have to give you the details of where they're gonna be able to access that information.
And I'm aware of that.
Yeah.
I'm very aware of that, and I think that that is a good thing.
Yep.
But you're missing my point.
Okay.
Is that, now, this is concrete, as far as I'm concerned. We're ready to approve it.
Mm-hmm.
So, since it is to that point, we're not gonna make adjustments right now, we're gonna go ahead forward with this, we're gonna get our salaries all done in June, or whenever we're gonna get it done for the employees. And then at that point, I could see, I'm just saying that, however we can do it, I think this was, you'll never convince me that we should not have advised our employees that this is what we're gonna present tomorrow night, or next week. This is what's gonna be done. I just think that that, that is, that, we talk about how valuable our staff is, and I say this all the time.
Sure.
These people are so darn dedicated to everything. We expect so much from them. They, they're wonderful to this, to our people.
Yep.
That come in, our citizens that come in. They go overboard for them. I think they deserved to have seen this in advance, to some degree. So, there, it would have, I think it would have gone 1,000% more smoothly, had they been able to do that. That's just my opinion.
Fair enough. And, it's always a challenge when we are talking... And it's always a challenge when we are talking about the implementation or the rollout of this. At what point do you bring the elected, the elected officials into it, the decision makers into it, and do you bring them into it before the employees, or do you bring them in after? And half organizations want to do it before, half the organizations want to do it after. And, you know, and I absolutely appreciate, this is the opportunity for diverging opinions on this, and if I had put it out in front of the employees before you, I expect that maybe at least one of you would be very disappointed in that decision as well, and so, you know, this is, this is the standard methodology that we use.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yeah, I was going to say, Commissioner Lawson and I had a little bit of conversation offline before this meeting about that very topic, and I know, having been through a couple of these, this has caused a lot of consternation with, as you know, with employees, and everyone's worried about, it's very personal, like you said, it's very personal, and it's a big deal. Whether it's even just your title, or more importantly, if some people pay, it's a big deal. But to your point, it's, it makes it difficult, we want employees to be in the know, but we don't want to make employees, you, I should say, don't want to make employees promises until it's bought off by this group here, because then you could say, well, okay, we'll do this, and this group will say, no, we don't want to do it that way, we want to do it a different way. So I can see how there's a struggle both ways, and I completely understand what Commissioner Lawson is talking about. The more, communication is always an issue, and it's usually breakdown of communication which causes most problems in any organization. The more we can communicate, obviously, the better, but there's some things that we just can't, I don't think, can communicate without some kind of approval from this body that, hey, we're going to move forward in this direction. And I think the way this is set up, we kind of, if we move forward tonight with, hey, this is kind of the base we want to go with, there's still a process, and hopefully we're going to hear more about that, and that's what I'm really curious to hear about, is that a process, because there are employees that are concerned from what they've heard so far, and we need to let them know, hey, listen, this isn't set in stone, what we're doing tonight is not set in stone, and there is some, a process will be in place that you're going to expand on a little bit, on what that looks like, on how we can get some remedy if you think you've been unjustly titled, or, or pay, or put in your step, or whatever. So, so that's just kind of my thoughts on that, and I said, we talked a little bit offline, but yeah, it's, it's like, it's the chicken or the, or the egg, you know, which comes first, and it's kind of difficult to maneuver that. So I just want our employees to know that, because like I said, I know there's a ton of them watching tonight, that we're just, we're just kind of starting this base process here, and we're going to move down the road, and there's going to be tweaks along, this is my third time through something like this, and I'll tell you, it always tweaks, there's people that are very upset, it's very personal, and when it's all said and done, just about everyone's, I think, going to be pretty happy. Actually, I think some people are going to be real happy.
I do too.
Because looking at this, I'm pretty happy with what this looks like, but I'll let you proceed.
Thank you. So to continue on the appeal process, I'm sorry.
No, no, I said, I don't see any other questions, so please go right ahead.
Thank you, okay. So to continue on the appeal process, when the employee gets the information, their step, their new salary, what the department heads and managers, and what we're going to have on ADP, is the appeal process form, it's two pages, okay? And it's all, it's just what they are concerned about, okay? Whether their pay grade, they don't think that's right, or no, you didn't include this, I didn't put this in my position questionnaire. There are some employees that didn't, that didn't, I don't think, took it to heart and didn't put everything in there. So this is not set in stone, they will be able, we will then send that to McGrath, and they are going to look at this position questionnaire for their position, and they will look at it, and then advise us. So it's not set in stone, there is, even though it's not the way Commissioner Lawson and I understand what you're saying, there still is a process, and it's not set in stone until we get all these appeals done. So we're going to give them two weeks to get the paperwork into us, and then we're going to send them to McGrath, and depending on how many they get, then they'll be able to go through all of them. But like I said, that's what you do, you look at the position questionnaire, and they're going to examine, maybe they did leave some stuff off, you know, and so it's not set in stone for the appeal process. Does that answer it, Commissioner Whittington?
Excuse me, Commissioner Whittington, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, no, that answers it. But I did have another question. What if we decide that there needs to be changes to some job titles, or the organization chart, like somebody, somebody is lower than what they should be on the, are we, who's able to make those changes?
We will make those, you know, this isn't going to be done until June. This kind of helped us with the budget because we had to budget for half a year, correct, Diana? Am I saying that right? No?
No. So to Commissioner's point, so let's say that an employee put in information about an appeal process, and McGrath comes back and goes, you know what, they provided additional information, this position really is, needs to move up from grade, you know, 220 to 225, we're going to go ahead and do that, right? So even though what we present to you tonight may have that position in 220, but with, again, all of this is based on the recommendation by McGrath, and so if McGrath comes in and says they provided X, X, Y, and Y, that position now seems to be more comparable and should be in pay grade 225, then those changes are going to happen based upon their recommendation.
Commissioner Johnson?
And just again, to publicly clarify, for some people have asked this question, and I think you've kind of described that, but I just want to make it clear to the employee listening, the ultimate decision on what we do is decided by the county, it's not decided by our consultant, no offense to our consultant, they give recommendations, but if we want to change a title, if we want to change any kind of pay structure, if we want to change any number, if we want to change anything, we ultimately have the authority to do that, and when the appeal processes, go through the appeal process, we ultimately make a decision on what we think is best for our employee, and best for the county, and so forth. So I know some people thought, you know, well, we're going to have some consultant come in and tell us how to run our county, that's not the case, that's not the case at all. They did the comparisons for us, and did a great job for us, and put together a lot of information. We ultimately will make that decision as a county, and how those appeal processes work. It's not, it's not an appeal process to the consultant, which some people thought, that we're appealing to the consultant to, hey, consultant, could you please consider this? It's not. We ultimately will make that decision. Am I correct on that?
Well, the appeal is going to the consultant because they're the one who basically has done the entire structure and made the analysis for internal and external equity. So yes, they will, and they'll come back with their recommend, as I said, their recommendation is, we believe, based on the information, the position stays in the current pay grade because it's comparable to the other positions that are in that pay grade, and what the market says that job is particularly, should be. Or they may come back and say, we recommend that, you know, it will be an increase, so...
Yeah, they'll make a recommendation.
Right, right.
The decision is not made by them. The decision's made by the county on what we're going to do, ultimately. That's, that's what's most important, and people didn't realize that. We can make, just like, just like with an attorney here all the time, we take opinions from our attorney, but our attorney doesn't make the final decision for us, and, I mean, he usually does, but, but it's his expert opinion, and we decide whether we're going to take his expert opinion or just go another route. Same with, with any kind of consultant we have, we decide if we want to follow that expert opinion or go another route. And so I want to make sure the employees understand that.
Thank you for the clarification. Commissioner Lawson?
One moment.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off, go ahead.
She had one thing to say here, let's see, Melania.
I do want to just talk very quickly about the appeal process, because I do not know how many employees are watching tonight, but if this, this is a direct to them, because there are going to be, oftentimes, there is this question of, well, the consultant was the one that made the original recommendation, it's coming back to that same, that same party, so how in the world, why, why are they going to be the ones to do the appeal process? And is this just a smokescreen type situation, and that they're all going to be, they're all going to be denied? And the answer to that is absolutely not. Our goal for the county is to give you a compensation and classification structure that is going to be market competitive and is as accurate as possible. And if something has changed, if something has been left off the position questionnaire, if something was misinterpreted by the consulting team, we want to make sure that all of that is taken care of as much as possible for the county, because we know that that is what's going to, that's going to help you have a stronger program. If that means that I own a mistake, or I own an oversight, fine. If that means that an employee forgot to give us information because they absolutely just did not understand the value of the position questionnaire process, that's very typical, that's just fine. So we accept the appeal process, it's okay. We want the appeals to come in based upon, I feel like you made an error, I feel like you made a mistake, I feel like something has changed in my job. This is not intended to be, I just want to see if I can get a little bit more money, so I'm going to see if I want to have an extra pay grade, you know, something of that nature. So we really do are encouraging, you know, absolute, you know, true substance with those requests, but, you know, we want to make it right, so.
Commissioner, Commissioner, are you following up on what you said? Okay, just a second, Commissioner Lawson, we'll just hold off and get you next, so please, Commissioner Whittington, proceed.
So say somebody appeals and you guys say no, and like Commissioner Johnson just said, the county gets the final say, so if you guys say no, who gets the, where does that appeal go to?
So what will happen is, when everything is done, I will be sending, you know, probably a memo with outlining what our recommendations are, and that will be, that will be submitted back to the Human Resources Director and the County Administrator, and then it will be up to your administration team to, to bring forward to the body, is my guess, is what's going to happen.
So I don't want this body to be in charge of day to day, but if somebody comes to us and says that their appeal was denied, and say some of the commissioners agree that they shouldn't be demoted from manager to coordinator, or something like that, what, what should we do then?
So I would say this, and we could certainly have that conversation, you know, I would, I would take you back to the report when it talks about titles, right? Because if really is, they're appealing about a title, and Commissioner Johnson and I had this conversation because we've been through many of these, right? Some people, title is more important. Again, I want to go back where employees are listening, nobody is losing money, and everybody has an opportunity to earn more money, but titles are important to individuals. And so we have been in situations where if you want to call yourself, and your department head agrees, you want to call yourself as a working title, fine, you can call yourself that. But when it comes to the classification plan, it is structured, because if you go back to the report that McGrath gave to us, and it makes a lot of sense, is you have those groupings and those job families, and those titles are classifications. And so that is what, from an official document, that's what the position is. But if you have a working title because I want to call myself something else, and the department agrees with that, that's fine, we don't care, right? But from a classification standpoint, so that we keep the integrity of the classification plan, it will be whatever the final report looks like, right? Does that make sense?
Commissioner Lawson?
Yeah, I think we lose some humanity, but that's okay. So, step process, I feel that I should be a higher grade, I put my request in, there is actual form that one fills out?
Yes.
Okay, and then it goes to our consultant.
Yes.
Is there a fee assigned with that process? So like we paid, say we paid, we have paid our consultant $500,000 or whatever. Okay, she's done. Now, every time there is a request from one of our employees, and it must go back to the consultant, is there a fee affixed to her?
Well, there's a couple of things. First of all, this process that we're talking about is appealing the original plan that is before you, right?
Right, right.
That is part of the study, there is no additional fee for that.
That's good.
We're getting into aspects of a reclassification of a position. So for example, let's say, two years from now, I am a director, I have an accountant position, I want to restructure that position, I've given them a lot more responsibility, I rewrite the job description, because now they're responsible for a lot more functionality. And so now, they will apply to HR, the director will, and say, I'd like you to consider reclassifying this from an accountant to an accountant two, let's say. So in that particular case, if we don't have an accountant two, and it's a brand new position, then yes, we have retained McGrath as a consultant that will help look at whether it's a reclass or a brand new position that's been created that we don't have, based on job description and the market, and help us place where, what pay grade that should go in. And so yes, there would be a fee as needed for those functions in the future.
Okay, thank you, that's a, okay, and then, you know, I disagree on one, I always disagree, and I apologize for that, but it's built into my DNA. Here's the thing, if there is an employee that comes to us and fills out the form, we're kind of in control of our fate. Whether you are still here, or there's a new individual here, you're going to know the lay of the land 1,000 times better than someone removed. I understand that all of this has been developed through our consultant, and I think they've done a beautiful job, don't get me wrong, I think they've done a great job on it. And I'm very pleased with the pay structure, that people are getting more money, that's vitally important to retain these wonderful employees we have. But I feel that when you start releasing your control, you start depending upon someone who is removed from this county, then if we do it this way, I'm one person, but I don't like it. I think it ought to be in-house, 100%, and we've got a staff that can handle it, we've got a administrator, whether it's you or someone else, that knows the lay of the land, it ought to go through there and then come to us at the final end. But I think that having the appeal process go away from here is, is not something that I, I find very appealing. So that's just my opinion, one person.
Commissioner Wagner?
Thank you. So if there's anything I learned in government, is that people hate two things, the way things are and change. And I think we have a little, little dose of that this evening. I will just simply point out that those who don't like the way things are should really enjoy moving up a few steps by June. I think that is one of the things that we have, one of the reasons why we looked at doing this was because we needed to know what the market said, we have now done so, and now we are taking action because of it, and there will be those who will appreciate that, I am sure. There will be those who don't like change because maybe now there is a structure that they have to conform to. And if there's anything that I've learned, that structure in government both has disadvantages, but sometimes it has advantages as well. You know what route you're on, and you know whether or not you move within the organization, what you can expect. I have no problem at this stage knowing that, that if you're going to start a new process, you might as well get it right when you start. And I believe that is when, that, that to me means that the appeal process should be done, and it should be done by the folks who have done all the other work to get us where we are today, so I have no objection, no reason to think that McGrath can't do it, I think that'll be fine. I just go back to the reason why you do it is because bad input gets you bad output. So if folks either did not take this seriously, or they didn't believe it was going to happen, or whatever the case may be, if, if you are one of those 500 and some employees who don't like what you hear next, fine, there is an opportunity to remedy that. But I also recognize that not everybody will like it, okay? But I take on the balance that we're doing something that's not only good for our employees now, but creates the roadmap for the future, where everybody understands where everybody is, and that's not a bad thing to me. And I will, I will simply, for those who may be watching, let the process play out. But before you come running and saying, this is bad and this is a problem, let the process play out. Because when you don't, and now you start trying to jump ahead of it, then it not only interferes with what may be good for you, but what may be good for everybody else too. So be patient, let's see what happens on June 13th, 2025. Administrator short, Administrator Short Timer may be here, maybe not, I don't know. But I do appreciate the work that's been done here, there was a reason why we did this in the first place, I think it is playing out, but everyone just be patient with the process. And if there's a problem, as has been said, we will fix it. But let's not create unnecessary problems in the course of doing that, and I'll leave it at that. Thank you for your hard work.
Yeah, thank you.
Commissioner Lawson? Commissioner Lawson.
Yeah, I want to say something here. I'm not resistant to change. I have said that I really like the plan, I like the way everything's been structured, I like that we have an appeal process, I think that's great. I'm, you know, I, I am not saying let's all wait, and nobody here has been more in tune for change. I have screamed all the time, just because we always did that, that doesn't mean we always have to keep doing it that way. And, and we have made massive changes, I've always been on board with all those changes. The only thing I'm saying is, yes, let the appeal process go through, I'm saying, let's put this thing in, in place, let's do our target for the date, June 13th, everybody gets their money. If they're unhappy with their title, if they're unhappy with their salary, then do the appeal process. I think that's perfect, I'm glad we've got it. All I was saying was, I prefer to keep that appeal process entirely in home, I don't think anybody else will agree with me, but I don't really give a darn. I would just like to see it kept here and not shipped off to somebody else, so that's all. But I like everything else about it, and I'm happy for change, and I'm happy that everybody's going to get a raise, except me.
And me. Commissioner Johnson, and you.
Yeah, and me. Actually, Commissioner Lawson, I actually agree with you on this appeal process, but I think I look at it a little different way. The way I look at it is the appeal process is first vetted through our experts that we hired, and then we get their expert opinion, but then it comes back to us to ultimately make the decision. When I say us, it's going to come back to HR or our county administrator to ultimately look at and say, hey, listen, this is the appeal, this is what our expert says, now let me look at this and say, okay, we know Clay County, they are Clay County, let's see how does this fit into our system. So ultimately, I think the appeal process is our own. I think we're just asking the opinion, just like we ask the opinion of our attorney or other experts that are out there. I think it's just going through the expert first, but ultimately, I agree, we need control of that, and we do. And I think, so I think it does both. And so I think if it helps put you at ease at all, it's not, it's not the, it's not the consultant who's going to make the final decision. So I think that's a good thing.
Okay, I see no further questions or comments, so please continue.
Okay, all right. One thing else that I have on this page is structural changes in ADP and the budget will be done between April and June, and we're asking our department heads and office holders to minimize changes of existing personnel. And it doesn't mean you can't fill a vacancy or do a promotion, or of course, there's going to be terminations and new hires. What we're talking about is reclassifications, to put a hold on that just through this time period, so we can get this in place and then go from there. And then, of course, the target for the payroll changes, and to be fully operational, you know, as long as we get this approved this week or next week, we're looking at the payroll of Friday, the 13th. So kind of appropriate. Okay, okay, then we're going to move on to the handbook revisions, that's the...
Oh, excuse me a moment, Commissioner Whittington, did you want to be recognized?
Yeah, so I just had one quick question for you. So looking at this, it looks like there's a lot of directors that are 300 level, but then it looks like there's some directors are down in the 100 level. How's that decided? If they're directors, shouldn't they all be on the same level?
Let's see.
So we got some that are 185, we got some that are 190, but then it looks like most of directors are 305.
Why do we have the IT director?
Yeah, and so, I mean, I'm an IT professional, and my day job, and IT is very important. So I would, I would think that that would be a higher-level job than what it is, but then also, like, you have the Family Support Service Director that's at 190. And I mean, I'm not saying that they don't do an important job, but it just seems like you guys have IT pretty, pretty low on the list.
All right, let me have Melania address that.
Not that I don't want to talk about it, but calling out a specific position on this evening in this forum, I think it would be, especially for the employee who is holding that position, it probably would be better to be taken off.
Oh, yeah, no, and I was just looking at it as somebody that works in IT on a full-time basis, which is me.
I understand.
That's, that's pretty low. You know, usually IT's pretty, pretty, IT's pretty important, so if you have some directors that are at the 300 level, I would, I would imagine you would see these other very important director positions at the same level as the Parks Director. I mean, I'm not saying there's nothing wrong with Parks, but it just seems, seems odd to me that you would have IT Director one, two, three levels below a Park Director.
Noted, and I would say that probably this is not quite the forum to talk about.
Okay, that's fine, but I think we need to, I think that needs to be addressed.
Right, I understand exactly what you're saying, but probably a different forum, just because we're talking about individual, like, single, single incumbent positions, which means we're in essence talking about a person.
Okay, well, that's fine, but if we're going to vote on this tonight, I want this addressed. So is this something you guys can address privately and then talk to us?
That they can appeal their pay, their pay grade level.
What if they don't?
What if they don't appeal?
Yeah, if, like, what if they don't feel comfortable?
Well, we've noted your application.
Yeah, and I haven't talked, and I haven't talked to anybody, I'm just saying as, you know, because this is what I do for a day, my day job, so...
It's so noted, and we'll make sure that that's looked at.
Right. Because that is a good point, and we will reach out.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Johnson, I think you are seeking recognition.
Yeah, thanks, Kim, I think you might have mentioned this, but the appeal process, is there a timeline on that? If this is approved tonight, what's the timeline on that?
Okay, our timeline is to get the letters out to employees next week. At first, though, on Monday, we're taking it to the department heads first. This is everybody and what's going to happen, just for them to make sure we've got everything correct. And then the letter, individual letter, will go to the employee. So let's say by the end of next week, then they'll have two weeks to fill out the paperwork, get that to us, and then we'll get that to McGrath. And then depending on how many we get, we'll see how long that will take them.
So we're hoping for, we're hoping in a two-week, two-week time, we'll get most of the appeals done. Is there, is there like a hard fast date? If you don't get it in by this day, you can't appeal?
No, no, we're going to, we're going to say two weeks to get it to McGrath.
Okay.
Okay, and then we'll see how many they get for them to do the turnaround.
Okay.
Yeah, exactly.
Perfect, thank you.
Yeah, I agree with that, 100%.
Okay.
If there are no further questions on this particular point, then please go forward.
Okay, so next we're talking about the employee handbook revisions. I attached the red line version, so you could see all of the changes that we're making to the handbook, okay? The first is the policy administration, and this is just recognizing the labor agreement may vary from the policy. Definitions is Section 2, and that is various changes that will align with pay plan and best practices. The Section 6, we clarified the on-call duty plan in the handbook. And on 7, the performance was, we did a clarification on the annual evaluation and introductory period for new employees. And then at Sections 11 is the classification and compensation plan, which explains the administration, the overview, the structure, and the procedure. So it's all the information in Section 11 that goes into this, and it will explain why we're doing what we're doing and how we're doing it.
Commissioner Johnson, did you want to jump in here?
Yeah, you bring up a point here about labor agreements, and I don't know if we want to talk about this now, we just want to forget about this.
No, we're happy to do that, we've had some discussions about that, so as the commission is aware, we do have a union agreement, contractual agreement. In that particular agreement, it is multi-year, but there was a clause in it because we knew we were doing this classification and compensation study.
Commissioners on your sidebars, if you can keep it just a little bit quieter, appreciate it, please proceed.
At the time the contract was adopted, so there is a clause in there that does open up the contract specifically about wages. And so if the commission approves this tonight, then we will have that on Monday, we'll have a conversation with our labor attorney, having them reach out to the union attorney to start having those conversations about this new structure and their representation and what that looks like. And so we'll probably be bringing an amendment back to that contract based on this pay structure. So that is, that is on our radar screen, and that is one of the steps that is in our process.
Because this, this pay structure is probably better than what they negotiated.
Well, yes, and actually, quite frankly, there, there is no change in their pay structure, so they can't really go to this until we open up that contract and revisit it, is my interpretation. But we're going to reach out to our attorney to say, where do we go from here? We now have this plan in place and adopted, so help us, right? And let's have those, let's open up that dialogue, because we want to take care of those employees also.
And I think that's a good point, take care of those employees and being the employer of choice, the fact that we go above and beyond what their union has asked for. I think that shows we're employer of choice and we care about our employers, our employees.
Absolutely.
Please proceed, I don't see any other questions or comments.
And then at the end, the philosophy, you know, we started at a target with 50%, but after hearing from the commission that your goal is 55 to 60, that, that is our target. So, let's see. And that gets us to the budgeting policy, which is Diana. And then I'll be back.
Then I'll be back.
Well, actually, quite a bit of this and the, and the budgeting policy, we kind of talked about it in the beginning when we kind of started having those dialogues, right? But we have, we thought it was beneficial that we actually have, and again, a policy is a policy, right? It is guidelines for the budget team as they go through the budget process each year, and sit down and start looking at the budget and the personnel costs and what we can do with personnel, and the wages, what does that look like? So what we have proposed in the budget process is, as I talked about earlier, there's really sort of three buckets of funding to look at during the budget process. And the first one is the salary schedule adjustments, the second one is funding the annual step increase, and then the third is job classification movement. And so with that, I'm just going to talk a little bit briefly about each one of those. So again, the salary schedule are those two schedules, right? The general, they're 24/7, the grades and the steps. And so what we're saying is the very first thing in the budget process, the pot of money to look at is, let's adjust the pay schedule and keeping up with the market. Not only keeping the Step 9 and Step 10 at 50% of the market, but again, financially, if the county can afford it, you really want to go a little bit beyond that because you want to start going towards your goal of being 55 to 60% of the market. And so you'd look at what the CPI has been for the last 12 months, which is what I have historically done when I've done the budget for the last three years, is what has been the CPI and how can we adjust our employees' salaries, the CPI, or greater. And so that will be based on, you know, what are the economic conditions, what are the budgetary constraints that the county has for that next budget cycle that we're looking at, and keeping in mind your compensation philosophy of really wanting to get to be not at the 50th percentile of the market, but really trying to get us to 55 or 60% of the market. And so, you know, how do we get there? And we know financially, we can't get to 60% of the market overnight, but how do you do that gradually based on the financial conditions? So that would be the first recommendation in the budget process with the budget officer and the budget team, in bringing to the commission the funding to adjust all the salary schedules. Those would, if approved, they would happen in January, so that means that first payroll in January, the pay schedules go up, I'm still on the same step, but my step goes up along with everybody else's steps, so I would see that increase in January. Very similar to what we did this last January when we adjusted people's salaries by 5% or 8% and the prosecutor's office. So that would still be, employees are kind of used to that, that would be that same process. The second pot of money that would be looked at in the budget cycle is, okay, let's fund the step increases for employees, right? Assuming every employee, full-time employee that is eligible, that is not on introductory status, would go up a step. And again, in general, that's funding another 2%. If they're on the 24/7, that would be a 3% increase. And that would happen in June. So from a fiscal standpoint, we'd really be funding six months of that step increase in that fiscal year, and then obviously the next fiscal year, you know, January through June would be the other half of that. So that does help the county a little bit from a financial standpoint, depending on the financial conditions, recognizing the fact that it's still going to impact the next year's budget, so you've got to look down the road. And so we were saying that that would happen in June, mid-year with employees, and again, that would be tied to an acceptable review, performance review, that again is left up to the department head and the supervisor on what that looks like for their department that meets their needs with their employees. Then the third pot of money, so to speak, is really what I'm calling job classification movement. This is movement that happens to jobs outside of the budget cycle. So again, when the budget happens and departments come forward, one of the things we ask them when they present their department budget is, okay, talk to me about your positions. Are you requesting additional positions? And if so, which ones? If, or, do I have a vacant position right now that exists? And you know what? We always encourage departments to look at it and say, is that the position do you need, or do you need a different position? And if you need a different position, then, and it's vacant, then you present that, or you want to reclassify a current position, you present that during the budget cycle. And so that's evaluated, and when we present to you the budget, that's already taken care of. Those are the easy ones, and that happens during the budget. But we also know, in the middle of a fiscal year, like now, or June, or August, I have a vacancy. And the department will say, you know what, that may have been, you know, an accountant, but I need a data scientist. I'm going to fill out a job description, and so I want to take that vacant accountant position here, and I want to change it, I want to reclassify it to a data scientist or whatever I need. Got a job description, it's submitted, brand-new job, we may use McGrath to help us price it, where does it go on the pay grade? And so there's going to have to be additional funding, because a department's not going to have that kind of increase to reclassify that position to a much higher pay grade. And so what we're recommending is, then we would keep a pool of money that's actually within the HR's budget, and so, because they'll be part of that process of the reclassification. And so then if it is approved, then we have the funding to do that. But those are the things that happen outside of the budget cycle, and they do happen. And we want to encourage departments to look at that and look at potentially reclassifying positions. They may also, it may not be a vacancy. I may have, you know, let's say we have something else like another Senate Bill 190 that comes down, and there is an enormous amount of work that we need to redistribute, so we're adding and changing people's current job descriptions, then we need to look at that and say, do those positions now with all these new responsibilities, does it need to be reclassified and go into a different pay grade? And so we want to make sure we have that flexibility to do that on behalf of our departments.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes, thank you. Real quick question. So when we talk about cost-of-living adjustments, or in the past, we've done what we call cost-of-living adjustments, but they're actually CPI, but we'd add to that.
Right.
So in the future, that would be separated out, we do, CPI would be the basic for inflation, but then anything that we do, we do above that, that goes towards the, the actual salary increase.
Well, so what we would do is, when I say the CPI, so that would be part of the analysis, and I'll just make up numbers. Let's say it's the budget cycle and the past CPI for the past 12 months, cost-of-living, Consumer Price Index, goes up 2%, right? So if I were here and I would come to the commission, I would recommend to you, and we could afford it, I would say, I am recommending that we do a salary adjustment, salary schedule adjustment of 5%, right? So that takes care of the 2% for CPI, but we are adding an additional 3% because I'm wanting to go beyond that and move us higher in the market to get away from maybe being 50% of the market, but maybe makes us 52% of the market, right? So that's what that would look like.
So would these steps change by the 2% or 5%?
They'd change by the 5%.
Okay.
Yeah. So if I'm changing, if we're changing the salary schedule, whatever that percentage is, that's what the, every step will go up.
Okay.
Right? And then we'd fund step increases that would be in June to move higher up into the pay grade, based on performance.
Okay. And the second thing is probably more of a comment, we have, I know the sheriff is here, Sheriff Will Aiken is here, he's, he's got, we have, one, two, three, four different other electives, right? That have their own departments, and you know, the sheriff in his department is obviously the biggest, you know, 200-plus employees, something like that. We have the auditor, who's got a few, we've got the assessor.
Prosecutor.
And the prosecutor, yeah, Zach, our prosecutor. And you've talked with all them, other departments, I think what's really... I think what's really important is that we have buy-in, and if we understand we do, and the ones I've talked to, that, that all these electeds in, in this body all buy into this, because for this to work, that's really what has to happen. We, we have a system in place now that's kind of hodgepodge, and we have different, different departments doing different things, in an effort to get their employees more compensation and more money and, and pay them what they think they should be paid. Uh, we've had, in the past, I do some funny things with the books, you know, whether it's changing titles or, you know, really, it wasn't very professional. This brings us to a whole new level of professionalism for the county, which I think is incredible. I love it, I mean, I absolutely love it. But it's important that all of our departments, the ones that we don't control, not only the sheriffs, but the other, the other three, that they're all on board, they all understand this, that, that our city prosecutor, or county prosecutor understands, hey, you know what, he's got to work within these boundaries, and if he wants to get a pay raise for his employee, there's a way to do that and work within the boundaries to make that happen. So he still has the flexibility to run his own department.
Yes.
Um, he or she, whoever's in that office, has the flexibility to run their own department the way they see fit, but we just have a, a process for them to go through to do that. Does that make sense?
That, that is correct. And we did spend time with each elected office holder and walked through not only this structure like this, but also how it would go in the future, and what are some, a little bit of nuances that are changed than how we've done things in the past. Not saying that they can't do those things, but, you know, we've had some things change where there's really not been documentation, so job descriptions are not current. And, and so we're saying, if you want to change a job and you want it to reclassify, then yeah, we're going to ask you to put it on paper on what that looks like.
Yeah.
So again, that, this system maintains its integrity and its, and its equitable and fair across the organization. And we, we had no opposition from any of the elected officers. And, and I'll be here to tell you, this is a change for this organization. And so what we're saying here to, you know, a year into it, the second year of the budget cycle, whoever's standing up here might bring back different recommendations to make it work, because we've lived with it for a year, and some things worked and some things might need to be changed. So I think that's also part of it is, you know, again, it's learning opportunity and flexible, and continuing to get feedback from our department heads and our office holders.
Right.
On, have they hit roadblocks? Have they had challenges? And how do we solve that?
Yeah. And we're, and we're not really locking department heads, or not departments, but, but other electeds is my bigger concern. They're elected to run their departments, uh, their offices, whatever, whatever it is, and, and we're not hamstringing them, we're just, we're just helping, giving them a system to work within, and they still have flexibility within that system in their own, in their own office or departments.
That is correct. They do have that flexibility, but we are going to strive to have continuity and consistency across the organization.
Right.
Because it does create internal strife when we have things going on in a depart, in a elected office holder department that can't happen in any other departments in the organization, because our employees know what happens.
Yeah, sure.
And again, we want to be fair. We want to treat all our employees equally and give every employee the same opportunities.
Thanks.
Again, kind of back to our budgeting process, so one of the things, and, and we're in the budgeting cycle and a little bit, Commissioner Wagner's a little bit, when you're talking about vacancies, so if we're putting the budget together and there is a vacant position, my recommendation, and, and the auditor and the budget team, we've talked about these things, is I would recommend if it's vacant at the time we budget, that you vac, you, you budget for that position at step five, right? Because what that does is give the department head or the, or the office holder flexibility on what they bring the new person in, depending upon their experience and their area of expertise. You know, likely they're going to start their employees, you know, at a step one or a step two, but we want to have that flexibility in case they do need some additional funding. Um, and then, and, but if they want to hire over step one, we're just going to ask that there's documentation, that it's signed off by the department head, you know, the hiring and manager wants to hire somebody above step one, that it's signed off by the department head, the office holder, and HR also, so we make sure, and then the auditor always comes in and makes sure we have the funding. Um, and then this budget policy also just talks about complacency, oversight, having to do an annual review, again, trying to have some position control so that we don't end up where we are now, right? Because this system is years old and it has just, we've, it's been willy-nilly changes, and so we have some inequity issues that we're trying to recover. And then about transparency and having all that information, as I talked about earlier, making sure that we communicate to employees what is going to be in next year's budget. Are we doing a salary schedule adjustment, what that is? Are we funding step increases, or could we not fund step increases this year? Or are we doing both, or what does that look like? So again, that transparency and communication, early on during, as the budget comes to the commission, we'll make sure that employees are aware of what's being presented also. So. And that's really kind of the, the sort of overview of the budget policy that we're recommending that is adopted. So with that, I think Kim wanted to wrap up, and then stand for any other questions.
Just kudos to Diana, she's a wizard with the, the numbers. You know, she's found quarters and nickels in the couch to put the money together to get this for the employees. Of course, working with Victor, and, and he knows like her plan, and I'm sure the new administrator, she'll show them the whole process, and, and I'm excited about it. Uh, okay. And, and just finally, we respectfully request your approval to move forward with the comp and classification study. We believe this is a crucial investment, and our most valuable asset are people. And we will provide a strong return through improved talent acquisition, retention, and overall organizational effectiveness. And we're open to any other questions you might have.
Any quick-
And I appreciate your concerns, and we'll, we'll address those going forward.
Questioners, comments from the commission? Commissioner Johnson?
Before I, we're ready for motion on this, right?
Yeah.
Before I make the motion, I just, I just want to make one comment. I, um, I kind of already said it, I'm hugely in favor of this. Uh, I think this brings us to a level in the county of professionalism that, that's, that's long overdue, but I think it's great, it's great for our employees. Uh, we're going to work out the kinks, there's going to be a couple of employees that aren't happy, we're going to work through those kinks. Uh, we're, we want to be the employer of choice, that's, that's one of our goals here. We want to be the employer of choice. Let me give you an example of what that means. Back when, when the four of us came on two years ago, the commission, the first meeting that we talked about, uh, it was budget meeting, we talked about, one of the big things we talked about was, was deputy, deputy salaries. At that time, starting to pay for a deputy was $19.75 an hour, which is $40,000, and $40,080. $40,080 two years ago. And now today, we're talking, if we get to the 50 percentile level here, we're talking $72,000. And if we get them up to the 66, or the 60, 50, or 60 percentile, we're talking over, over $76,000. I mean, th- this is what this is doing. This is showing us, this is what we need to pay. This, this is what's fair market value for our employees. And that's what I think the value of this really is, and I think it's great, great that we have this. And so with that, there we go. Uh, I'm going to, I'm going to put all three of these together, unless someone will separate them out, I'm going to put all three together. I'd like to make the motion that we approve 2025-124, 2025-125, and 2025-126.
Motion's been made for the approval of 2025-124, 125, and 126. Discussion, I think I would like to echo what Commissioner Johnson just said, and that is that we are finally in a place where we are able to start looking at what is fair. And what is fair is so often in the, in the eye of the beholder, but by going to a market-based uh, study, which thank you very much for the, uh, for that information, we now are, are have something solid to, to, to base our, our numbers on. The thing is, government is not always good at listening to the marketplace. But private businesses have to listen to what the market tells them, or they're no longer in business. We as government are not always as diligent, so I'm, I'm very happy that we are paying attention to what the market is telling us, and that we are reacting in that way. And I am also very pleased to see us bringing our, uh, the general level of compensation into line with what the market is telling us. I think we all knew that we were not where we wanted to be and not where the market would tell us. This, in fact, puts us in that realm, and I think this is a great step forward. I like the, the safety factors of appeals processes, and obviously there are checks and balances worked into this, and I think it addresses a lot of the issues that many have raised. So certainly while I suspect I will not be voting on this, because I don't, I don't see a tie happening with five commissioners. But I am certainly supportive of this, whether I have the opportunity to vote in favor of this or not. Further discussion or comment before, before I recognize for close? Commissioner Carpenter?
I just want to say thank you to Kim, Diane, and everybody for, and all the department directors and office holders for all the work that went into this. Appreciate it very, very much. Thank you.
Yes, the work was tremendous and appreciated, certainly the, the diligence and the hours. If there are no other questions or comments, Commissioner Johnson, you are recognized to, for closing comments and to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Lawson?
Yes.
Commissioner Wagner?
Aye.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
Commissioner Withington?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
That concludes our regular agenda. That brings us to reports. Administrator?
Um, yes, thank you. There is one report included in your packet, that is the Auditor's Cash Balance Monthly Report as of March of 2025. Certainly if you have any questions, I encourage you to reach out to Auditor Herbert, he'd be happy to answer any questions.
And not to let you get off the hot seat, uh, we now go to county administrator comments, so please proceed.
Uh, thank you. Just a, a couple of items. First of all, as the commission is aware, um, just recently the county adopted an updated comprehensive plan, um, and just wanted to announce that we are going to host an open house to the public, uh, if they have questions about the com, new comprehensive plan, what that means. Um, we're going to hold the open house here in the county chambers on April 22 at 6:00 PM. Certainly encourage anyone who's interested in future growth in the unincorporated areas of, of Clay County to please stop by and visit with us and the staff. Um, second issue, um, not that we'd beat a dead horse, but certainly appreciate everybody's hard work on the, on the compensation and classification study. Appreciate all the office holders and their input, all our supervisors, all our department heads, the sheriff, as Kim mentioned, we, we spent a long time with him, um, and, and his team working through it, and, and Kim and her staff, and so really appreciate all the work on that. Um, the last item is just announcement that there'll be a work session next Thursday with the commission, and we've invited all the chairs and committee members as a work session at 4:30 here in the chambers. We will have a guest speaker, it is the Attorney General's office will be coming and speaking about Sunshine. There have been questions that have come up here at the commission room about Sunshine and, and items that, how far do you talk about something that may not have been noticed? And just some general questions of operation, and so we have scheduled a representative from the AG to be here at 4:30, um, here in the chambers, and we've invited all of the county boards and commissions. That is Thursday, it's before your commission meeting.
Excellent.
Next Thursday, the 17th, at 4:30, um, and then we expect it to probably, there won't be much of a break, and then roll right into your 6 o'clock commission meeting, which is your regular business meeting. But that's all I have, thank you.
Would you be interested?
We, we will work on that.
Uh, what do you plan to bring? Commissioner Wagner will shake it up a little bit, do you have any comments that you'd like to make?
I wouldn't shake it, so no.
Commissioner Lawson?
Nothing.
Commissioner Wag, uh, Withington, excuse me.
Just want to say congratulations to everybody who won their elections on Tuesday. Also, uh, want to say thank you to the 300 volunteers who spent their day at the polls, but then I also want to, I also want to encourage this body to be contacting Senators Maggie Nuremberg and Curtis Gregory, uh, and our governor, was another election and another screw-up by the election board. Um, it's time that we overhaul that election, uh, that election board, and the governor is going to make some appointments, but I think it'd be nice if this body contacted the governor and our senator who has to do the, because it's got to go to the center for confirmation, so we should all be contacting them and encouraging them to appoint new election board members.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Thank you, Commissioner. Um, I just want to, I'm going to keep this real brief, out of, out of love for my fellow commissioners. Um, I, I just love, I love my country, want us to prosper, hugely important for a million different reasons, one of which, we discussed here today, being able to continue to, uh, have a healthy economy that allows us to pay our employees what they deserve. Um, I'm just going to, I'm going to end by quoting Commissioner Knowlton today, which is-
Wait a minute, am I going to be okay with this?
Well, you, you said it a bunch on the last, in your last comments, and I agree with it, which is listen to what the market is telling us. And that's, that'll be all of my comments for today, but I feel strongly about it, so I thought I'd say it. Thanks.
Commissioner Johnson? Uh, I would just like to say, appreciate, appreciate you saying that, Commissioner Carpenter, uh, that we did obviously just have an election. Uh, we always, I think, celebrate the fact that we do go through this process and that we do have a transition of, of power to, to sometimes new people, sometimes those who have been serving for a while. The only thing that I would recommend is that, as usual, in these kind of elections, turnout is not what we would hope it to be. I would encourage our fellow citizens to regularly vote and to be there every time. Be an informed and regular voter. There is nothing, if, if you want to do something to preserve this country and preserve this county and our way of governance, participate, be informed, and vote. Thank you very much.